South St. Paul City Hall and the Monday, June 28th, 2021 meeting of the South St. Paul School Board. Lisa, would you please take the role?
Inspector Diaz?
Here.
Inspector Roche?
Here.
Inspector Weber?
Here.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Here.
Inspector Arndt?
Here.
Inspector Felton?
Here.
Chair Walker?
Here.
Seven present at six o'clock.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, once again, good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight or watching on television, as the case may be. We will start the meeting off with the approval of the meeting agenda for tonight and then the minutes of the meeting since we last met. That includes the school board meeting agenda for tonight, June 28th, the committee of the whole meeting minutes from June 14th, and the school board meeting minutes from June 14th as well. Do I have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Thank you. And second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then the motion passes and the agenda and minutes are approved. We'll go right into reports and we'll start off tonight with an update from Jean Zender, our community education director, who's going to give us a preview of the central square program offerings.
Good evening, Dr. Webb, school board members, and South St. Paul community. I'm happy to share some positive good news as we get ready to transition into our operating central square. So first and foremost, I'd like to start off by thanking our partners in the city, especially Shannon Young and her team, who have really been instrumental in helping us as we grow into this position. Dr. Webb, the admin team, Lisa, Donette, and my community ed staff too, because it takes a whole team to move this process forward. So, um... I just wanted to run through the timeline as we get set to move. So July 1st, myself, Linda, and Amy will move over to central square to begin to set up and to be there to answer questions. One of the great things that we've been doing this last month is meeting with our senior board members, community members. We've been spending time at central square. Shannon and her team has been introducing us and putting faces and names together to try to make everybody feel comfortable and confident as we continue to move forward. So we will use July 6th through the 9th as a reset. We will be there in person to take registrations and/or there's directions in the newsletter that should be hitting the homes, I think Wednesday of this week, to talk about how you register, and that we'll be there to support. Super excited. Our virtual fitness classes start July 3rd. Our seniors at our board meeting, we've reached out and did a special invitation for our seniors to join us on July 7th, so we can regroup because we haven't met since March of 2020. So we're looking forward to that. I'd like to add kudos to our HR department and our finance department that helped us get prepared and ready to staff the building. So as we mentioned earlier tonight, we have our five fitness instructors who currently were working at central square continuing on as district staff that you'll be approving this evening, as well as building supervisors. So staff that was interested in staying on with us and helping us start up central square stayed with us. So July 12th is kind of our next big date that we're looking forward to. So our senior center programming will begin, our in-person fitness classes will begin, and our lap swimming will begin. And so September 7th is the fall programming. And so that is going to be more of our, like our youth enrichment and general community ed. So some of the things that we had decided early on was to make sure that we took care of the kind of first big areas, which was to get our senior center back up and running, to continue our fitness classes, and to continue our swimming, lap swimming. And so those things will take place, as I said, starting July 12th. And then we look forward to the fall. As we had mentioned earlier too, the next big pieces we're going to look at is getting our gymnastics program back up and running, and then getting our swimming lessons up and running as well too. So as I said, Lisa and Donette have been instrumental in helping us get our communications out to our community. So this flyer was sent to all of the seniors on our list via our constant contact, and then to any of the current members of central square. And as I said, this will hit your homes hopefully Wednesday of this week. New this fall, so fall classes starting September 12th with our adult enrichment classes. We have health and wellness, fitness, culinary arts, creative arts, hobbies, dancing, and home improvement. And then with our youth enrichment, so some of these programs are the same sort of opportunities that we have been housing at the different elementary schools and community ed all along. What we're really super excited about is we've been in partnership with Luther Memorial Church and their youth pastor to offer some free activities for our middle school students to be able to participate in two to three times a week. So we'll welcome them into central square, give them a place to be and hang out, but have some supervised activities going on as well. That is what I've brought before me tonight. Is there any questions or can I answer or solicit any feedback, I guess?
Jean, just one question. When would be a good time if a person had a little bit of time to come through and take a look at the facility? And if you said never, I'd understand.
We want you to come. Anytime. So I think the first week or so, so that the 6th through the 9th, please come. You can see kind of that transition, nothing large or huge, but it's just kind of some moving in and moving out. So Bill, anytime that you want to come. The 12th through, I think, the 17th of July, we really feel like we'll be really set. And we hope to have some sort of a community celebration end of August. But anytime, we'll be there Monday through Friday. My team for sure from 7:30 to 4 each day. So anyone is welcome to stop by. We felt it was really important to get to central square so we could help answer any questions and kind of assure, you know, our community that our goal all along, just as the city's goals all along, is to serve our, our community. And it is in no way, means, shape, or form that we will not continue to partner with our friends at City Hall with Parks and Rec or anything like that. Chad Sexhauer had alluded to, we've been working really hard with his activities director and his team of folks too. So it's a, you know, we just want to welcome our community and look forward to continuing to get feedback about various other options for programming as we hit the ground running. So please come anytime.
Thank you.
I'm curious about the partnership with Luther Memorial. What does that entail?
So they have had some grant money. They have been trying to run a program over there so it would not be anything religious or anything. It was strictly just activities for the students. So they have some grant money, Nikki, that they would be able to volunteer, like a volunteer base for folks to come in. So we're working together with them. So nothing, nothing faith-based, just, they tried to run a similar program at their location and found that getting the kids there from, from the middle school program after school, just they weren't quite making it there. And it was just kind of a natural fit to try it at central square since we're right basically in the parking lot of the middle school program. So we've worked with them in the past too, Nikki, to, so summer of 2019, we co-sponsored, just like we did with Parks and Rec. So the three of us would try to, we didn't try, we shared responsibility for setting up some field trips for youth across the city and just had different pickup and drop-off locations. So just some more of that, just having some adults in the, in the facility to welcome the kids that come after school.
Who would run these, this program or these?
We will.
You guys?
Yeah, we will, in partnership with them. So yes, Linda Jacob Spuce is our community ed facilitator. So we will be on site when those activity things are going on. So.
Okay.
And I like that you're targeting that age group. They're not in daycare, you know, childcare is hard to find, but they're not big kids yet. So they oftentimes slip through the cracks. So I'm glad that they'll have an opportunity to, to land somewhere.
Thank you. And I'd also like to give credit to the South St. Paul Educational Foundation has also sponsored many programs for us over the past few years too. And we, we have focused in on our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and trying to find activities for those that are maybe not in the traditional after-school activities and just space to be and to hang out while they're maybe waiting to get picked up or maybe for an evening activity to start as well too. So.
Anything else? Well, this is exciting, Jean. I just want to acknowledge that this got added to your plate and to several other people's plates. And there was a pretty quick turnaround time to get this all up and running. So I just want to acknowledge you and Mark Fenton and Aaron Bushburger and Lisa Branddecker. And you've mentioned many others that were involved with it. And I just want to say thank you for the, the time that you've put in. And again, the, the quick turnaround that you had to get all of this going.
Well, I appreciate that. And like I said, we didn't do this by ourselves and we will continue to grow in our partnerships and, and lean on support from the district. But, you know, on behalf of my community ed staff, we are really excited to be coming.
Yeah, it is exciting.
And feel like it's, it's a, it's a proper fit for us. So thanks for the opportunity to, to guide this work.
Great. Any last words? Otherwise, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
We look forward to more updates as it goes on.
Thanks, Jean.
The next report is regarding the public listening sessions. Again, this is something that is offered by the school board. There's several ways you can, can get ahold of the school board to talk with us about whatever's on your mind. The first meeting of the month, we have in-person meetings that you can come and spend some time chatting with us just face to face. Otherwise, you can pull the form off of the school website and submit that. And we would contact you, answer your question or concern, and then report on it in the meeting. Or again, you can just pick up the phone and call one of us or email us. Our phone numbers and email addresses are all on the school website. We don't have any public listening session comments to report on tonight, but we encourage you to go ahead and, and submit one if there's something on your mind. And with that, we'll move on to Superintendent Webb and the highlights from around the district. Dr. Webb?
Yeah. And as we get started, I would just echo your comments. The shout-outs to our team for getting to this point with central square. Just huge hats off to Eugene and everyone else here in the room and other leaders that aren't in the room for helping to be part of that solution to get started July 1 and really open up fully July 12th with all the pool and swimming and lap swim and, and then just all the fitness classes that you'll be offering. And now, you know, really because of the pandemic, not just in person, but continuing online. So there were some gifts, even as hard as the pandemic was, that will continue on in all that we do. So thanks. Just one more shout-out to our recent grad, Suni Lee, for making the Tokyo Olympic gymnastics team last night. So just lots of fun and celebration to see someone that was just walking across our graduation stage two weeks ago, now competing on a world stage. So it gives me chills just kind of sharing it and saying it. And just so great that ties back right here. Just hats off to people like Chad Sexhauer and our staff that are just really growing young athletes and supporting our kids from, not only from South St. Paul, but beyond our borders as well. So lots to be proud of there. Okay. Our superintendent update for tonight highlights our summer meal program. We are really proud to be offering free meals again all summer. And the specifics are here on the screen. But not only do we have free meals for the summer, it continues on into the entire coming school year. So the federal government has truly stepped up, recognizing the, really the tough aspects and the financial challenges for families coming out of the pandemic, and have continued this program on as well for free summer meals for South St. Paul children ages one through 18. So just lots more information on our sites and websites, but we wanted to give that a shout-out today. Again, in August, we have our kindergarten camp, second week of August. So we want to give some early advertising to that for families and parents. Statewide, kindergarten numbers were down as many families kept their kindergarteners at home. So we're starting to see some of that beginning to rebound. And we want to invite families in for kindergarten camp in August. Our Packer preview already has kids back in the building. We have 170 middle school students that have been coming in for touring the middle school, getting familiar with it. Oftentimes, there's that transition fear. And this is, in South St. Paul, the gift that we have is there's really only one transition. Once you're at sixth grade, you know you're in the same building till 12th. But that fifth to sixth, coming out of Capoja, coming out of Lincoln Center, or even Holy Trinity, wherever you're coming from, we want to give students as much TLC in that transition as possible. So hats off to all of our middle school staff that are working on that transition. We also have a number of kids at Summer Learning Academy. We have grades one through five, half-day-a-week. And there's six weeks of this program. We're in our second week of, of six. So just lots to celebrate there too. We have our early learning, summer blast, students going into four-year-old preschool or kindergarten also taking place. Here's the board in action last Friday night, and not throwing candy, but handing out candy to the community. So just a great weather night and a huge crowd turnout. So hats off to our entire community and the city for organizing those events. Just a couple of important date reminders. Again, no summer learning classes over the July 5th through 8th of the Fourth of July week. We have our central square visit and get signed up for what's coming for future events at central square, July 6th through the 9th. We have our central square reopening on July 12th where lap swim and all the rest, fitness classes really kick off in person again. And as I mentioned, kindergarten camp, August 9th through the 12th. And we'll go back to you, Chris.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. As we mentioned over the last couple of meetings, it's so nice to see the, the students back in the buildings. Just love those pictures. Next on the agenda is the consent items. That's the financial claims and the staffing. Do I have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then the motion passes and the consent agenda is approved. We do have two policies tonight that are up for approval. Do I have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll ask Dr. Webb to maybe say a few words on these two policies before we approve them.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do so. Our, our policy 902 is really our building and facility usage policy. So we're updating that to make sure that all the people that are using not only our district facilities but central square get those updated pieces of information. The really good news is that we've kept our fees the same, no increase for a whole another school year. And then about a year from now, we'll be bringing forth additional change there. So that's the building usage one. I also have just 903 is our visitor policy. So just always continuing to keep updated communication information on best practices when parents visit our schools. Okay?
Very good. Any other discussion on the two policies? All right. Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The motion passes and the policies are approved. We'll move it now into the business items. The first is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2021-22 budgets. Do I have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll start the discussion by asking Aaron Bushburger, our finance director, to come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Chair Walker and school board members. I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation to go through. I know the board has seen this and we've been through six months of work together. So I know this is a little bit repetitive, but would like to obviously share this information and details with our community. So just, well, we're required to approve four budgets in four of our funds, the general fund, the food service fund, community ed fund, and debt service fund. As a reminder, we've been working on this over the course of the past six months, specific to the general fund. So you can see way back in January, we reviewed information. In March and April, as a reminder, we did bring forward proposed budget adjustments in the amount of about $1.4 million, which the board took action on. We've, we've spent the past couple of months actually developing and putting all the budget details together. And we're here tonight to ask for your approval. As a reminder, we do have a fund balance policy in place that strives to maintain 12% of the annual budget. We are projected to be at about 9.5% at the end of this upcoming fiscal year. And as a reminder, we did have a brief conversation about this at finance committee. So expect more information to come to the board about evaluating our current fund balance policy to determine if that's the appropriate policy to have in place moving forward. State funding perspective, as of right now, as we mentioned in Cow, the state education bill has been approved by the House. It's still waiting to move through the Senate and the governor's desk. However, you will see that there is a $554 million increase in funding for E12. The general education increase is 2.4%, 2.45% in the first year and 2% in the second year. I will make a note that that 2.45% increase is only an increase on a portion of our funding. It's not like our overall revenue's going up by 2.45%. It's only about half of our money is, half of our revenue is going up by that amount. So the rest is staying relatively flat or just seeing small increases. Good news from the VPK voluntary pre-kindergarten front is that it looks like the seats will be approved for Lincoln Center as well. So we know Capoja has free voluntary pre-kindergarten next year. And it looks like Lincoln will have the same as well. We are waiting to receive kind of final approval from the state before we start communicating that with our families. There's a small increase statewide in special education funding on a one-time basis for next year, and then a small increase in English learner funding. So on the right-hand column, you can see some of these have not been built into the budget because they haven't been approved by the state yet. So once that happens, we'll be working to bring back any revisions that are necessary. So from a state funding perspective, as I just mentioned, we have a 2% increase in general education revenue built into the budget. We're waiting, as I mentioned, on the legislature for that. There are a couple other pieces that I wanted to point out as well. So compensatory revenue. So that's based on the counts from our families that qualify for free and reduced meals, or what we refer to as educational benefits. And so since we had free meals during the 2020-21 school year, there wasn't necessarily that impetus for families to complete those forms. And this money is based on how many forms, I'm sorry, how many families qualify for these benefits. So actually, during the upcoming budget, we're actually seeing a decrease in about $300,000 in revenue just due to that factor. So that is having an impact on next year's budget. The second piece I'll mention is special education revenue. So the way the revenue works is it's, we get funding the year after we spend the money. So as we've communicated, we have seen a pretty substantial savings in special education specifically around transportation costs. So while we're saving money this current year, our revenue's going to go down the next year as well. So it's not really, if you look at the big picture, it's not really savings. It's just kind of shifting the money from one year to the next. So we are planning on about a decrease of about $450,000 there in special education. And then, as I mentioned, voluntary pre-kindergarten, we are expecting those seats to become available. We have talked quite a bit about federal funding as well. So there's three different federal funding sources. The first two we're incorporating in this next year budget. And then ESTER III, about $3.8 million. At this point in time, we do have that earmarked for future years. And I'll, I'll show you that slide shortly. So just a couple of notes. Those first two pieces have been approved by the Minnesota Department of Education. Just know the ESTER III program, there are some public feedback opportunities around our safe learning plan and spending plan. So we've already got some of that, those feedback opportunities posted on the district website. So the public does have an opportunity to provide feedback there. As we've talked about many times, our funding is primarily driven on enrollment. So I have three years' worth of data here, 2019-20 actual enrollment at 3289. The budget for this current year we're in is 3110. And we are projecting enrollment to be at 3,032 students for the next school year. And then on the expenditure side, staff compensation. So any contracts that are settled, we have them budgeted based on those actual contracts. And we are using estimates for any contracts that are unsettled at this time. We also build in inflationary increases in other areas, utilities, insurance, transportation, things like that. So from a budgetary standpoint, the far right-hand column is what we're proposing for the 2021-22 budget. You can see there that there is a planned deficit of about $195,000, leaving an overall total fund balance of about $5 million or just over 11%. I will mention, I showed that state funding slide. So there are some differences in what we currently have in the budget and what it looks like the legislature is going to approve. At the most, we're looking at maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars out of any of those differences. So really, what we're probably going to end up with at the end of the day is more of a balanced budget, if maybe just a real small surplus. But don't expect too many significant changes from what we currently have on the screen here. So that's 2021-22, as we've talked as board and administrators in the past couple of months. Here's kind of that longer-term look at what our financial situation could look like. So again, a bunch of assumptions built in here. However, we do know that we have some, some challenges ahead to address. So. From the food service fund perspective, some of the budget assumptions. So as we mentioned, we've got some good news from the federal government is that we'll have free meals for all students for the 2021-22 school year. The federal government will provide reimbursement for all of those meals under what's known as seamless summer option or SSO. So that's really good news. And, right, we still want families to, to complete those educational benefit application forms for the next school year. So you'll, you'll continue to hear more from us regarding trying to encourage families to complete those forms as well. Not only do they receive, you know, reduced costs, reduced fees within school district programming, like athletics and activities, there's numerous other benefits that come with that as well. And then just staff compensation. Again, estimates are used. And then we are, as we do in, in other years, increase the budget for additional food costs as well. So for the food service fund on the far right-hand column there is revenue of just over $2 million, expenditures of $1,988, leaving a surplus of about $105,000. So overall, food service fund should be in, in solid financial shape into the next school year. And then community education fund, from a state funding perspective, we're assuming no change in state funding there. Again, a lot of what community ed does is based on fees. So we have estimates for kids' choice, early childhood, family education, school readiness, things like that. And then in the past couple of years, we have had to transfer some dollars from the general fund over to community ed, primarily to help support the emergency care program that we were required to run during the pandemic. So good news is, is the reliance has moved away from the general fund and they're fully self-reliant into the next school year. And then same thing for staff compensation. Estimates are used where needed. And then we're budgeting kind of based on a quote-unquote "normal" school year where all of our programming will return and be operational for the next school year. I will also mention, from a central square standpoint, we are starting to develop some of those components for the programming that will be offered at central square. You can see senior programming, fitness classes, lap swim, gymnastics, everything that kind of Jean Zender just previously mentioned has been built into the budget based on what we know at this point. So you can see revenues of $64.6 million, expenditures of $71.7, leaving a deficit of about $7,000. I will mention that this is just based on the new programming there, and we still have the existing costs that we previously did in place. And so paying for things like utilities for the building, paying for the cleaners, those are already factored into different components of our budget. So this is just based on any new costs that we'll experience. And then I will also mention that by moving our Community Ed staff there, they're now able to take over the senior programming from the city staff as well, and so that will come with some financial savings as well. So if you factor in those components together, you know, we're coming out ahead by about $20,000. Again, that's separate from the existing costs that we're already incurring there. So Community Education, you can see on the right-hand column, revenues of just over $2 million, expenditures of about $1.967 million, leaving a surplus of about $38,000. So overall, Community Ed should be in just fine situation as well. As a reminder, Community Ed is everything from adult basic education to preschool to early childhood family ed to Kids' Choice. So just a lot of different programming that stuff. And then finally, the Debt Service Fund. Again, this fund is used to pay our debt payments on any long-term debt that we have, and so we are able to levy for those dollars and then spend them on our debt principal and interest payment. So you can see really nothing too significant there, about $3 million coming in and $3 million going out in debt service payments. So really, next steps, we're just going to ask for your approval tonight of these budgets, and then we'll do routine financial updates and revisions with the board based on any new information that we get. So with that, I can turn it back to you, Chair Walker, and answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Any other discussion or questions for Aaron? Doesn't surprise me, we talk about it quite a bit, so I think everyone's well-versed on the board anyway. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then the motion passes and the 2021-22 budgets are approved. Next is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the Resolution for Membership in the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust, the acronym of MIST. Lisa, would you please read that resolution?
Yes. It's a resolution for membership in the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust, whereas the School Board of Special School District VI has the authority to participate with other units of government for the purpose of jointly providing casualty, property, and other projections through self-insurance and purchased insurance. Therefore be it resolved, the board approves the district's membership in the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust and adopts their intergovernmental agreement as presented and intends to be bound there, too.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm looking for a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, we'll ask Aaron to say a few words on this as well.
Thank you, Chair Walker. And so we did briefly review this at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. So the MIST program is a group insurance pool that 24 other Minnesota school districts currently belong to, and so we would become a member of that pool. As we covered, there are additional coverages with lower deductibles, and that also comes with a lower premium as well. So we think this is a great opportunity to help bring, you know, some stability, lower costs, and really some improved insurance coverage for the district. So with that, we'd ask for your approval.
Very good. Any other discussion? Right, Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
Thank you very much. Then the resolution is passed. And we'll move to the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2021-22 cyber and workers' comp insurance. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. And for discussion, we'll once again ask Aaron to give us a few words on...
Thank you, Chair Walker. So I'll just cover these briefly. So the workers' compensation program, we are proposing to stay with the same company, SFM. We've had a longstanding and really positive and good relationship with this company. We are actually seeing a decrease in workers' comp premium next year, which is also good news financially for the district. For the cyber liability program, we are proposing to change companies to BCS. They will continue to offer us the same coverage that we've previously had, which is good news. I will make one note that the cyber liability insurance market continues to be challenging and will be for the foreseeable future, and so we'll need to make some changes internally to continue to keep up with best practice in that area. So with that, we'd ask for your approval for those two programs.
Thank you again, Aaron. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then the motion passes. Next is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2021-22 Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Very good, thanks. Discussion, we'll ask Dr. Webb to say a few words on the handbooks.
Yeah, we have a couple of handbooks tonight for approval. As you mentioned, the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, and also our Family Handbook. So, you know, our ultimate goal here is to make sure that we're preparing each and every learner for their next step, so as they graduate from high school, they're on to their next success. In order to get to that goal, we need to make sure we have a positive learning environment here every day in our school district, and it's welcoming and safe for kids. So the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is really focused on making sure that in one-stop shopping, every family from early learning through grade 12 knows all of our policies, procedures, all of our school rules and guidelines. We also have within that handbook just a number of our consequences if students were to violate some of our school rules or policies. And again, it's all in one place. So it's anything from anti-bullying information for families, but also consequences if you're involved in something like that in our school district. So that's the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. We also have the Family Handbook. So we have the Rights and Responsibilities as one. We tried to separate it out so people could find things easily. And then the Family Handbook has just a number of really great resources that are, that we present as a district specifically. Things like, how does our food and nutrition services program work? Everything from our free breakfast to our lunch systems within the, within the school district. How do you get involved if you're a family member in South St. Paul in our schools? How do our district communications work? What is something like Peach Jar, and what is that if you're a parent in our school district? So we have a lot of specifics in that Family Handbook, and just really how to navigate through our school system, all in one spot. Finally, as we turn the page and get closer to the school year, our school principals will also be getting into families' hands their guidebook. Like, where do you park at our school if you're coming? Where do you drop off your kids at our school? What's the school schedule? And that'll be in the school family guidebook. So tonight, we have the Family Handbook, District Family Handbook, and the Rights and Responsibilities for approval. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes and the handbooks are approved. The last business item is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2021-22 Resolution for Membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Lisa, would you please read that resolution?
Be resolved that the Governing Board of the School District Number Six, County of Dakota, State of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events, referred to in Minnesota Statute Section 128(c) dot 01, to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes.
Very good, thank you very much. Looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
Thank you, and the resolution is approved. That brings us now to our informational items, where we'll ask the board members to give us updates or whatever's on their mind. Tonight, we'll start off to my right with Inspector Aaron.
Well, the only thing that's on my mind is I'd like to thank everybody who showed up at the parade, and a special thanks for everybody who had the foresight to bring children with. A lot of the legwork. I know that Monica and Linda walked the whole parade, I think.
And John.
And John, yes, we can't forget John. I think, Dave, you walked quite a bit of it, too, didn't you?
Yeah.
But it was a really good time, and it was done really well, and I think for the first time that I can remember, there was candy left. At the end of the parade, there was one bucket of candy left.
Like, seven pieces.
Yeah.
Well, that's after I got done passing it out by the end of the parade. There was a whole bucket there to start with. But thanks, everybody, for coming together as a team and representing the school board as well as they did, because it was really a positive experience for the community as well as the school board, and it was just great. It was awesome. Is that the word?
Sure.
I'm working, awesome, it was awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And that is really noteworthy to have candy left over at the parade.
I hoarded some.
However, we got there, that's all that matters. Monica?
I would also like to thank everyone for coming to the parade. It was a super fun event, it wasn't too hot, so that was a great thing. I think my favorite, not that I have favorite children, but I think my favorite children along the route had taken like, one of those like Nerf basketball hoops and attached a pillowcase beneath it, so like you could throw candy off the backboard, and it fell into the pillowcase, which I just thought was the most ingenious method for getting candy into a pillowcase that I had seen, so that, I just had to say kudos to the engineering feat that was taking a Nerf hoop with a pillowcase to acquire candy. So we got some future engineers out there, I am convinced. The only other thing is that tickets are now available for the South St. Paul Community Theater shows. We have both Space Princess Wars, which is the junior player show, and then Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat is the all-community show, and that's going to be quite the show, because we literally have five-year-olds and 80-year-olds in that show. So it is quite the community breadth of effort. And that's it.
Excellent, thank you. And Linda?
Yeah, I'm writing my reminder to get tickets for Joseph. Nothing.
Fair enough?
Yeah.
Fair enough. We'll go down to the other side for Wendy?
Yeah, I too, just want to thank everyone for their parade support, too. It was, it's always fun. Thank everyone for handing out the candy and all the great community support, and all the people that waved and clapped as we went by. And the other thing with Capoja Days, when I went over to Central Square on Saturday afternoon, I want to put a huge kudos out to our, our high school robotics team. They had a booth set up at Central Square during the day, when the arts and crafts and everything was going on, and I stopped there and seen that, seen their thing that they had built. They gave me a brochure, and it was a lot of fun, a lot of information that they were sharing with the public, and just want to thank them for, for being there and bringing their big machine along. I also said to them, I says, you know, guys, if you're ever interested in coming to the Committee of the Whole Meeting, talk to Mr. Ochaki and see if he could include you when the high school does come, and they were quite surprised, and oh, they got so excited, thinking just the possibility that maybe someday they could come, the robotics team.
They did a demonstration, too, Wendy, on Sunday.
Oh, I didn't get to see the demonstration, unfortunately, but it was, it was really nice, and I thanked them for coming. And also, as Gene Zender had mentioned earlier, the senior center programming will be getting started again, so I want to put a personal thought out to South St. Paul residents age 55 and older, if you're interested in getting involved with senior programming, please, please keep watching for more information to be coming out in the month of July, so looking forward to that. And then the last thing I have is, is the South St. Paul Open Foundation. We'll be having their annual golf tournament fundraiser coming up July 19th. The golf tournament is at Southview Country Club, and that evening, there will be a dinner and an awards ceremony that will be held at the Croatian Hall. Tickets are available, you can go on their website, sspopen.org, to purchase them. And their honoree this year is Richard Lick. He's a South St. Paul graduate, has been very active in a lot of different things in South St. Paul. So we're looking forward to the, to the open event on July 19th, and we look forward to people's support. Even if you don't golf, you can always make a financial donation to the organization, so look forward to seeing everyone there, so thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. John?
Excellent. Nothing to report at this time.
All right, and Nikki?
Just a shout-out to the Peacemaker Foundation. There's be the third annual golf tournaments coming up on August 23rd. It's a very fun tournament with lots of prizes and extra side games, if you will, and dinner is included in that. So if you want to make a foursome and join us, the money this year is going to go to the South St. Paul Peace Guides, so that we will be able to have a peace guide at Capoja for sure. And John Lallaberty is running the whole show, and if you're interested in either just donating to Peacemaker Foundation, or if you would be interested in golfing, my email is on the South St. Paul website under the School Board. You can certainly contact me, and I can pass that information on to John. Anybody on the board that might want to throw a few dollars towards the Peacemaker Foundation would certainly be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. We do not have a supplemental agenda for tonight, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, Wendy, I just want to tell everybody that Richard Lick is also known as Beaver, has been for the last 60 years or so. So if you don't know Richard, you do know Beaver, and he will be the honorary chairman at the Open, so...
Noted. Still looking for a resolution, or, no, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes and we are adjourned.
Yeah, that's amazing.